Call this meeting to order. Hello, everybody. I'm President Will Hampton of the Common Council of Noblesville and call this meeting for Tuesday, April 28th to order. Again, we are doing this via Microsoft Teams. There is a call in number if you are with the public and you would like to chime in on a certain item on the agenda. That number to call is 812-250-2251. Again, 812-250-2251. And once you are connected, you need to enter 839-837-682-POUND when prompted. Again, that number is 839-837-682-POUND when you are prompted. And that way you can join the meeting via telephone. We will start like we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance and our IT Director Jamie Yost, who's helping us put all this together with the teams, will lead us again tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Yost.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. United States of America. To the public, which is one nation.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Roll call tonight, we have Charlene Cummings, the Deputy Clerk, who's helping us tonight. And you will start with the roll call. Charlene.
Mr. Air.
Present.
Mr. Voice.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 14th, 2020 meeting. We have a motion. A second. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is O'Connor. I move to approve the minutes from April 14th of 2020.
This is Mark Voice. I second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 14th. This is again a roll call meeting. Normally, if you're just tuning in, these are hand votes and it moves a lot quicker. But because we're in this world right now, this is a roll call. So Ms. Cummings.
Mr. Voice.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
I think it's an aye.
Okay. Mr. Hampton.
Did he, did he vote, Mr. Air?
Aye.
Okay, he's, okay.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm, I'm also an aye. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cummings.
Nine zero.
Next on the agenda. Thank you. The next on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make him, I would move that we approve the agendas presented.
Mr. President, this is O'Connor. I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Again, Ms. Cummings, this is a roll call.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Right.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Voice.
Aye.
And Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine zero, the agenda is approved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cummings. Again, the phone number, if there's people who want to call in is 812-250-2251. We have reached the point in the agenda where we do have petitions or comments from citizens. Mr. Yost, is there anyone on the line?
Mr. President, there appears to be no one on the line.
Yes, so no one on the line. And I believe our Mayor, Mayor Jensen, is going to use this opportunity to speak. Mr. Mayor, are you there?
I am here, Mr. President. Thank you so much for the opportunity to say a few words and hello to the entire City Council. I just want to start out by thanking you, as always, for your continued commitment. I've spoken to most of you over the past several days, just to keep you updated as we go through this very tricky time in our city's history. I would like to start with a point of personal privilege. There is a special person to all of us named Kathy Richardson-Williams, who's celebrating a birthday today. And I know that she is a faithful watcher of City Council meetings. So I want to wish her a happy birthday on behalf of all of us before I get started. But I would just like to thank all of our residents who are taking this time, this hunker down Hoosier directive from Governor Holcomb, seriously. We're taking it seriously here at, in the city of Noblesville. And I know that we are at a difficult time as we start to see some light maybe at the end of the tunnel, some guidance coming later this week. I would, I would guide everyone to continue to adhere to that guidance from both our federal and our state friends and follow that closely. You may have heard last week that the state announced an upgrade in our testing procedures across the state. Excuse me, that's allergies, not COVID for the record. Our, our testing across the state, Noblesville's actually how, a home to one of the testing sites here at Ivy Tech, run by the National Guard. Individuals will be getting postcards or an email in the mail, inviting them to take part in that test. So if you go by Ivy Tech, you'll see some testing going on there. So that is what that is about. Excuse me again. I want to take a brief moment and address something that I know is very important to this body, and that is the fiscal health of our city. So many of you on the council have spoken with me directly about our fiscal health. It's obviously a very, very important matter for us that we are addressing internally. And I would like to talk a minute tonight about some steps that we are taking to address that. Just last week, we asked our directors to take a moment and look at their budgets for 2020 and identify some areas that, excuse me again. Excuse me. Some areas that they can cut. As you all know, because of the fiscal health of this city, we have a healthy rainy day fund here in the city of Noblesville. We were really asked our directors to take a look at some cuts in the 2020 budget, really focused on planned expenditures that are no longer necessary or prudent from a cost benefit analysis in our new economic environment. Excuse me again. If you need, we've asked them.
Go ahead. If you need a break.
Yeah. Just a second here.
I see you didn't keep the cough drops I gave you.
I know, you gave me some a few weeks ago, Brian.
That's no fun.
We've asked them to take a look at reprioritizing some of our capital improvement projects. We know that it's important, though, that we move forward with some economic development projects that are really the most impactful projects. So tonight, I really want to announce two immediate steps that we're taking here at City Hall. First and foremost, we have identified 1.33 million dollars in current budget cuts that we will take into account immediately. In addition to that, we've also identified approximately over a million dollars in additional cuts that we're going to be looking at reviewing over the next several weeks. So again, 1.33 million dollars immediately cut from our budget in the 2020 budget with an additional million dollars that we have identified for possible future cuts that we'll be evaluating. I also want to announce that we are immediately imposing a hiring freeze in the city of Noblesville for all non-essential employees as well as non-COVID-related positions. I state that last part because I know there is a item on your agenda tonight to re, for, for the salary ordinance to basically give a new title for an existing position. That position will have a part of their job focused on COVID-related workforce development. So that position will not be included in that, but immediately impose a hiring freeze. I'll just end by just reiterating that we are working with our state and our federal partners, looking at any reimbursement opportunities that we'll have going forward. This is an ongoing process that we are committed to taking. But I know that our city's financial health is of most important to this body. It's a most important to our residents and it's a most important to us here at City Hall. So I wanted to announce those immediately, those immediate actions that we're going to be taking, starting today, going forward to this fiscal body and look forward to addressing any questions that you have going forward. But we ask that you just join us in this time, of difficult times for so many, as we move the ball forward and continue investing in Noblesville's next chapter in a financially sound way. So with that, I'll stop coughing now that I'm done coughing and, and yield the floor over to any questions that you have.
Any questions for the mayors? Greg? No, I thought you were about to say something, I'm sorry. I think we are done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Moving on to council committee reports, I think we have a couple. Mr. Smith, did you have a Parks Committee report?
I did, Mr. President. Yeah, the Parks Board met virtually on the 15th through a very similar platform to what we're doing now. They had an abbreviated meeting just to cover topics that were necessary and pertinent to time. And so they, they mentioned that they had a lot of cancellations and loss of revenue due to the COVID situation, obviously. But one of the things that I thought was a cool story that came out of that was they, the Park Board was able to give away a lot of the flowers that they had planned to plant downtown. They gave them to residents around the city. So that was a really cool way to reach out to the community and lift some spirits in a hard time. The staff touched a little bit on the uptick in golf and use of the golf course since the weather's been nice. And then they also approved a few contracts, one for Kona Ice and the operation of the park and then one for a development, design and construction documents for Hop Station Forest Park. That was about it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other council committee reports?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
The Finance Committee met April 23rd and a number of the items that we discussed are on your agenda. This evening, the refunding of the 2014 Redevelopment Authority refunding bonds for 146th Street was sent to the council with a recommendation from the Finance Committee to approve. This will reduce our current interest rate approximately 1%. Will save the taxpayers approximately a million four in, in dollars for repayment of this bond issue. This will ultimately defees over a 10-year period. So the existing bondholder was benevolent enough to waive their call provisions. So we were able to actually reduce the rate. And just given the current environment we're in, the rate is 2.15%, which is somewhat attractive, given where we're at in today's environment. So we moved this forward for, with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Murray went through the Redevelopment Commission Annual Report, which is on the agenda. So I'll let him speak to that. But it's very well done. There's a lot of detail in it and it's something that I think we can use as a great tool from a long-term planning perspective going forward. The new position that is on the agenda, I'll let Ms. Reed speak to that. But it also comes to you for, with a favorable recommendation from the committee. Mr. Barr has spent some time talking about the fiscal effects of COVID-19, which the mayor just addressed to some extent with regards to the 1.3 million cuts. And of course, we're going to be looking for federal and state reimbursement and potentially some additional assistance that's been part of the CARES Act and additional appropriations that Congress has made available. So we'll certainly be looking to try to take advantage of that to the extent that we can. But rest assured, the Finance Committee is looking at different ways that we might be able to forecast revenues. I think we're going to see more of an impact in '21 and '22 than we will in '20, particularly as it relates to lit. So the Office of Finance and Accounting is working feverishly on that. And we will continue to talk about that at all of our upcoming Finance Committee meetings. We talked about the appropriation transfer, which is also on the agenda, so I won't go into that in any depth. The claims come to you with a favorable recommendation. And I would just say that we are in a very enviable cash position. I think we need to make sure that we maintain that. And we are going to develop some contingency plans. I think the mayor's taken a great first step in looking at different expenditures that are in current budgets. And we'll look at what '21 and '22 might bring after Mr. Barris and Mr. Spalding, in conjunction with Mike Reuter, have an opportunity to do some strategic planning and forecasting based on different revenue scenarios. And that, those will be forthcoming. But I commend the administration for taking the opportunity to look at these different things and then make some, some strategic decisions, at least in the short run. And then we'll make some longer-term decisions as we get more data points. So, Mr. President, that was the summation of the meeting. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. O'Connor. I believe there are no other committee reports, so we need a motion for the approval of the claims in a second.
Mr. President. The claims.
Darren. There's a motion. Second, from anyone?
Second.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mr. Air with a second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the claims. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Voice.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine zero, the claims are approved.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Moving forward on the agenda, the previously discussed ordinance, number 10-04-20, counsel to consider ordinance number 10-04-20, an ordinance providing additional appropriations in the general fund for the funding the Small Business Resilience Grant Program. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller. And the ordinance before you is certainly familiar to you. It's the second reading of the ordinance to appropriate the funds for the Small Business Resilience Grant Program. And those funds were appropriated from the General Fund to the Economic Development Department to make those grant payments. And the only thing I'll, additional thing I'll say about that right now is there is another item later on the agenda that's related to the overall financing package on this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spalding. Any questions for Mr. Spalding, any council members? Seeing none, hearing none. This is a matter of a public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing for ordinance number 10-04-20. Mr. Yost, is there anyone on the line? Phone number.
Mr. President, there appears to be no one on the line.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance 10-04-20.
Second.
It's a second for Mr. Peterson. It's a second for Mr. Peterson. This is a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Ms. Cummings?
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, public hearing is closed.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve ordinance ten dash oh four dash twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. I think it's a second for Ms. Wilds. This is a roll call vote to approve ordinance number ten oh four dash twenty. Ms. Cummings?
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, your ordinance is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Now, new ordinances for discussion, number eleven dash oh four dash twenty, counsel to consider ordinance number eleven dash oh four dash twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number forty-one dash ten dash nineteen A, a twenty-twenty salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the City of Noblesville.
Mr. President, I would make a motion introduce-
Somebody's introducing, move to introduce.
I guess, I'm not sure who did that, either Mr. Peterson or Mr. O'Connor?
I'll second it.
Okay, now, Mrs. or Ms. Reed?
Good evening. Um, this item before you tonight is an amendment to the twenty-twenty Salary Ordinance, Ordinance uh, for Appointed Officials and Employees. There are three specific changes to this ordinance that I'm going to go over. Um, typically Holly will do these, uh, but because one of them is pretty specific to economic development, I said I would go ahead and handle them. Um, and I know that uh, several of you have heard this in the Finance Committee meeting as Mr. O'Connor alluded to a little bit ago. So three specific changes to this ordinance, um, all of which I'll just, I'm gonna, you're gonna hear me say this a couple of times, so I apologize for being redundant, but budget neutral, um, and have been detailed out in your packet and represented by the letter X on that ordinance copy that's attached to your memorandum, memorandum in the packet. So the first is a title change only and would modify the current administrative manager position. That title would change to Operations Manager. The second is a title change only, modifying the current Recreation Director position to a title called Recreation Manager. And the third, as Mayor Jensen, Jensen mentioned earlier, is a reclassification of an Economic Development Specialist to a Workforce Development Manager. And obviously, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on that specific one and go over um, the items outlined in your memo. So the Economic Development Department with the support of an administration is requesting to repurpose one of our two Economic Development Specialist positions. We would uh, call that a Workforce Deve- Development Manager. Um, in conjunction with this reclassification, we will be eliminating a part-time position from our budget. With that position elimination, those funds will be reallocated towards the proposed maximum salary for that Workforce Development Manager, as you can see on your ordinance, which would therefore keep it a budget-neutral amendment, ending with a surplus. So I'm going to walk through the math on that and I know Mr. O'Connor has his calculator out, so I swear I checked myself like four times. Um, the proposed maximum salary for the, for the Workforce Development Manager title will be seventy-eight thousand dollars annually. The current maximum salary for an Economic Development Specialist is sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. The difference of the two positions is twelve thousand forty-three dollars and twenty cents. The part-time position that we will be eliminating in this process um, was budgeted for sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. So if you subtract the difference from what we are eliminating with that part-time position, it leaves approximately four thousand seven hundred dollars and forty-nine cents remaining. So um, as I mentioned before, it's, it's budget neutral, but we also will have a surplus. We also have a couple of months where that position's been uh, vacant and hasn't been filled, where we'll be giving money back in that line item at the end of the year. Um, Economic Development is confident that this investment will pay for itself, both in the short term with the COVID nineteen business ramp-up investigation and, and help we'll be giving in that line item. And then long-term for business retention and expansion, as well as attraction and community impacts. So uh, with that, I will ask if anyone has any specific questions of me or any details in the memo or even any math figures.
Any questions for Ms. Reed from the council?
Mr. President, the math was spot-on, so I'll give Ms. Reed credit.
Thank you, I checked myself over and over.
I, Mr. President, with everything that's going on and how important this role is, I would like to make a motion that we waive the rules and approve ordinance eleven oh four twenty on the first reading.
We have a motion, is there a second for that?
A second.
I think I heard Ms. Wilds with a second.
That's fine.
Okay, so um, we have a motion and a second to, to uh, to waive the rules. This is a, a roll call vote to waive the rules and approve on the first reading. Uh, Ms. Cummings?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, been approved to waive the rules.
Mr. President, I would, this is Mr. Peterson, I would make a motion to approve ordinance eleven oh four twenty.
Schwartz with a second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance eleven oh four twenty. This is another roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, your ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sarah. Moving to miscellaneous, uh, miscellaneous number one, the council to consider approval of Noblesville Small Business Resilience Grant Agreements. Ms. Arnold?
Good evening, council members. Kayla Arnold, Community Engagement Manager, uh, with the Economic Development Department. You have in front of you all of the signed grant agreements from the businesses who received a Small Business Resilience Grant. As a reminder, uh, we received two hundred and nine applications with a collective request of approximately one point eight million dollars. We were able to award forty-six businesses based on the factors that contributed to the overall purpose of the grant and awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total. The agreement states that the monies are to be used for eligible costs based on their application and also requires them to provide a report detailing those expenses on or before June thirtieth of twenty-twenty. I'm requesting that the common council approve these grant agreements and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, any questions for Ms. Arnold?
Mr. President, Aaron Smith, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Smith?
Um, yeah, Ms. Arnold, I was, um, I was really intrigued by the, the report part of this. Is there any way that um, some of those reports can be made public, either on their own or in a summary? Just so that um, folks in the public can see the effect that this is really going to have?
Sure, um, the plan is to have um, some type of summary put together. We did as part of their application when they submitted for the grant. They were asked if, you know, we could reach back out and use kind of their story um, to, you know, tell that story of how it impacted their business positively. Um, so that narrative will be asked when we ask for their reporting. So we've already heard a few stories um, about how people have been able to bring some staff back. So we're excited to see um, when we ask the collective group.
Great, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions? I just- Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Is that Mr. O'Connor?
It is, um, I would make a motion that we approve miscellaneous number one, counsel to consider approval of Noblesville Small Business Resilience Grant Amendments as presented.
Is there a second?
Aaron Smith will second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve miscellaneous number one. Ms. Cummings?
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, your item is approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Arnold. Moving to miscellaneous number two, counsel to consider resolution RC twenty-two dash twenty, a resolution approving an amendment to a lease between the Noblesville Redevelopment Authority and the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission, the issuance of the lease rental refunding bonds by the Redevelopment Authority and other matters related thereto. I believe Mr. Howard, is he joining us on this via the telephone? Mr. Yost, is he there?
Yes, he is on the call. He might just be muted. Mr. Howard, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I believe he has to hit star six to unmute, correct?
If he's dialed in, uh, he looks like he's actually part of the team.
I didn't have him there now.
There he is.
You got me?
Yep, we do.
Okay. I think Mr. O'Connor, uh, as part of his Finance Committee report, uh, gave you all the uh, relevant facts to this resolution. Uh, a unique set of circumstances where Capital One, uh, had the bonds previously at uh, uh, three point two percent. They're willing to take that down to two point one five percent, waived uh, some call protection. And uh, uh, one of the uh, bigger savings we have, of course, part of the reason we have big savings is this started off as a fifty-five million dollar uh, financing for Cumberland Road, I'm sorry, for one hundred and forty-sixth Street from Cumberland Road to exit, then exit ten. Uh, it's down to twenty-nine million. And with uh, with this uh, refunding, uh, the last collection year will be uh, twenty eighteen uh, for payment in twenty nineteen. So uh, based on finances recommendation and your long agenda, I'll stop and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Any questions um, from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve miscellaneous number two, uh, resolution RC dash twenty-two dash twenty as presented.
Is there a second? Schwartz a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is call vote, Miss-
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Uh.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Mr. Schwartz?
Was that an I, I'm sorry?
Yes, I for Schwartz.
Okay, okay. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, your item is approved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cummings. Moving to miscellaneous number three, counsel to consider resolution RC dash twenty-three dash twenty, a resolution authorizing the transfer of real estate to the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Andrew Murray?
Thank you, President Hampton, members of the council, uh, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Department for the record. Uh, before this evening, this is a resolution that would authorize the conveyance of approximately six and a half acres of real estate currently owned by the city to the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission. To quickly orient you to the subject property, um, again, six and a half acres in size, located at the southeast corner of one hundred and forty-first Street and Oleo Road. Um, and this, this uh, real estate is depicted in Exhibit A to your uh, resolution. For background, and as some of you will recall, uh, the city acquired this real estate in uh, twenty-seventeen as part of the Borg Warner deal. Uh, and for the past three years, uh, we as a city have collected minimal to zero property taxes uh, for this ground. And we would certainly like to put this property to a higher and better use uh, for the benefit of the city, uh, as well as the taxpayers. And so as a result, um, with this resolution approval, the plan is to ultimately solicit the development and business community through a public offering process and ultimately dispose of the ground uh, to an offer that we as a city are all, are all satisfied with. So um, procedurally speaking, um, if this, if, if, if all goes to plan tonight, we can, we will take this request to the Redevelopment Commission um, and ask that they request uh, approval of this conveyance and then um, as well as um, authorize uh, staff to, to notice this public offering uh, document to the, to the development and business community. Um, with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Uh, we certainly feel this is a good opportunity, again, for the city as well as the taxpayers. Um, and I'd request that this resolution be uh, presented this evening. Um, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Murray? I had just a thought, and this is always scary, nobody likes when I say I have a thought. But I can't remember when this happened. Did, were we expecting Borg Warner would use that land? I can't remember, I don't know.
So, so we acquired the Borg Warner ground as well as the surrounding acreage. And then in our development agreement with Borg Warner, it is contemplated and understood with our partnership with them that we would ultimately solicit, you know, and market this ground for economic development purposes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, uh, not really a question, more of a comment. I think that this is um, an appropriate thing to do because we can get this property on the uh, on the market and hopefully start to generate some tax revenues as a result. So I think to Mr. Murray's comments, right now, it's generating virtually nothing and from an economic development perspective, even though we're in a interesting time, I think there are plenty of people that would find this attractive. So I'm supportive of, of uh, moving this forward, I suppose, with that. I'd make a motion to approve miscellaneous number three, resolution RC dash twenty-three dash twenty.
Second?
Thank you, guys. We have a motion and a second to approve RC dash twenty-three dash twenty. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero, your resolution is approved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cummings. Moving to miscellaneous number four, the council to consider report of Redevelopment Commission twenty-nineteen activities pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash fourteen dash thirteen. Again, Mr. Murray?
Again, thank you, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Department for the record. Uh, this item before you is uh, simply an annual reporting requirement. Um, every year, the, the Redevelopment Commission must submit a report- Every year, the Redevelopment Commission must submit a report to the mayor and the common council, and then ultimately to the Department of Local Government Finance that sets out activities of the commission from the preceding calendar year. And so, this report that you have on your agenda is from 2019. I'm not planning to go into great detail at all unless you would like me to, but I will make the commitment and make myself available should any, you know, counselor have any follow-up questions after this meeting. But essentially, in the report, you have four appendices of information. The first, Appendix A is commission detail, so that includes general activities and the membership composition. Appendix B is a summary of revenue expenditures and cash balances by each TIF district. Appendix C is a summary of outstanding debt to which we are using TIF revenue to pay down debt service. And then finally, Appendix D is a summary at a parcel-by-parcel level at each, you know, district, providing you with different assessed value metrics. The overarching theme from the report, if you're going to take one thing away, is our TIF districts, you know, were healthy and steady in 2019, and all districts have healthy cash balances. Certainly, there's, there's some good data here that we will continue to use as a short-term and long-term resource. But at the same time, we will continue to strive towards adding layers of sophistication, especially with what we're experiencing right now. But again, I would encourage each and every one of you to review it in detail and reach out to me if you have any questions, if you want to discuss further. With that, I'll stop there. This item was discussed with this council's finance committee at their previous meeting. But for tonight, there's no action required. But this is just simply an FYI and request that it be acknowledged in the meeting minutes.
Thank you. Any questions at all from Mr. Murray, from the council?
Mr. President, I would just point out there's three more TIF districts that aren't in the report, but they weren't active in 19, and that's the Levinson, the Campus Center, and I believe the Field House. So you'll see those in the 20 report. Is that not right, Andrew?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And as Mr. Murray said, there was no action required on this, this evening, so no vote. We'll move to miscellaneous number five. Council to consider resolution number RC-25-20, a resolution waiving certain procedures and formalities during disaster emergency for deposit of funds. I think, believe, this is Ms. Lindsey Bennett.
Hi, good evening, council. This is Lindsey Bennett, City Attorney. You have before you a resolution that we have present, that we are presenting in response to the ongoing COVID crisis. The State Board of Accounts has put out some guidance that if we get to a point where we need to make less deposits of the funds that the city receives and that we cannot do it on a daily basis, that we may do it on Tuesday and Thursday. If Mr. Spalding's still on the line, he can correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe the city is right now making deposits every day. But the State Board of Accounts has given us some guidance that if we get to a point where we can't or do not want to make those deposits every day, that it is okay to do Tuesday and Thursday. But we have to have a resolution of council to do that. So that's, in a nutshell, what the resolution says. It's COVID-related, and it will expire once the governor's executive order for the state emergency expires. So it may, it may be ongoing, but it may end pretty soon as well. So we just wanted to make sure we were being proactive in covering our bases.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spalding, are you still there? Is there anything you wanted to add?
Nope, that was all, that's as I understand it, and everything she said was correct.
Well, that's a first, huh? She didn't have anything else to add. Great job. Go ahead, Ms. Bennett.
I'm not sure if that's a good thing.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve miscellaneous number five, resolution RC-25-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RC-25-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine zero, your resolution is approved.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bennett. Moving to miscellaneous number six, council to consider receipt of summary of fiscally-neutral first-quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to resolution RC-03-20. I don't know if this is Sam or you, Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, council members, Sam Barris. This item is an informational report that is a result of RC-03-20, which the council adopted back in February. That resolution essentially gave the Controller's Office permission to initiate small appropriation transfers that are both technical in nature and fiscally-neutral on its own volition, and then report those actions to the council on a quarterly basis. So this is the first report under that resolution. It details, there was only one this past quarter, and it was actually related to the council budget. It moved $1,000 of appropriation authority from the 300 series of the budget to the 200 series for, covers, covers some supplies costs. In the future, there may be more items on this report, but they will look like this, where they're not really substantively changing what a department is doing. They're sort of a technical action to align somebody's budget with some, some needs like this. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Any questions for Mr. Barris? Seeing now this, again, no action necessary, no vote will be taken on this. So thank you for presenting that. Moving to transfer number one, council to consider transfer TC-02-20, a cash transfer from the rainy day fund to the general fund. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and this is an exceedingly simple item. As I referenced earlier, it's, it's related to the first item on the agenda. So it is a cash transfer of $250,000 from the rainy day fund to the general fund. And the essential purpose for this transfer is to actually have the rainy day fund support the cost of the small business resilience grant. So money moved from the rainy day fund to the general fund and appropriated out of the general fund with that previous ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Any questions, council?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move to approve transfer number one, transfer TC-02-20 as presented.
Second.
It's Mike Davis with the second, Mr. O'Connor. And Mike Davis, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine zero, your transfer is approved.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Thank you.
Again, thanks to Jamie Yost, our IT Director, for helping us pull this off. Again, another, another meeting in the books with the Microsoft teams. Thank you, Ms. Cummings, for doing your great work as deputy clerk. Thank you very much. Before we get to council comments, the mayor, Chris Jensen, is with us still and had a final thought, at least for him.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, because I coughed at you for a good four minutes earlier. Just, I mean, in my rush to get through that, I wanted to just thank our department heads. Cutting $1.3 million quickly out of a budget with identifying additional million more is no easy task. And all that is done while still providing excellent service to the people of Noblesville. And it was done by digging deep, knowing that we're in this for the long haul to protect our community. So I just wanted to thank them in particular. That was no easy task, especially Michelle Gladaski and Matt Light in the mayor's office. Put a lot of hard work into that. And I'll just leave you with that today is Takeout Tuesday. It's Noble Spirit Week in the city of Noblesville. It's Takeout Tuesday. I took out for Maria's at lunch today. I would encourage council members, you still have time to take out. Anyone who's watching tonight, take out and look for the Spirit Week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week, and post your pictures online. With that, thank you, Mr. President. And again, I apologize for my allergies.
You're fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council comments. Anyone with something to say for the good of the cause?
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would just like to share that as a proud staff member of Riverview Health, we really have been planning and preparing for this whole COVID-19 situation. And fortunately, the surge has not really hit Riverview Health or even Hamilton County. And we actually do something special that whenever a baby is born, on our overhead speakers, the Brahms Lullaby plays. Well, we decided to create and celebrate when we've got COVID patients either being extubated or being discharged. And when a patient is discharged, the song "Walking on Sunshine" plays. And today, we heard that three times on our overhead speaker. So we had three patients discharged for COVID-19. So it's, good things are happening at Riverview Health. Unfortunately, good things are happening in Hamilton County. We just encourage everyone to continue to wash your hands, to wear a mask when you're going to be in connection with other people, and continue to practice that safe social distancing.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Any other comments tonight?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would just say that the banks are continuing to circulate capital. There'll be another $300-plus billion in the marketplace. So I personally have done a few more of those loans. The money is circulating. I think that ultimately, it will be of great benefit to a number of the small businesses. For those that haven't tried to apply, if you think you should or could, don't wait. But there's opportunity there to try to bolster working capital, particularly payroll, and, but the markets are moving. So I think the good news for all of us is there will be dollars and we'll look for a little brighter situation here in the next few months. So keep the faith.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any other comments?
Real quick.
And Mr. Eyre.
Yes, I would like to thank all of you that are in the trenches, the bankers and the, and the hospital workers out there. Great job by everybody trying to keep the economy rolling. I'd like to thank the administration for taking a look at budget cuts and hiring freezes. Hopefully, we'll be able to kick everything back up in a few short months. But at this point, I think it's good plan. So I would like to thank the mayor and administration for staying on top of it.
All right, thank you. Last chance. Any other comments? Great job. Again, as always, I want to thank Jim Wofford and the guys at Hamilton County Television for bringing this to everybody under these circumstances. He's always there each and every week, but this is a little bit different scenario right now. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.